All right, it's 6:35. I'm calling the meeting to order at 6:35. And a motion to approve the agenda that may be amended. So, I don't see any. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Approval of the minutes. We've got all three of us for November 11th. This was the regular meeting on September 11th. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes?
I look, it looked good to me.
Yep. All in favor?
Aye.
And we got the special select board meeting on November 18th. All three of us were at. It was just really to sign off on the FEMA note and a motion to accept the minutes for November 18th. All in favor?
Aye.
Next up on the list is Board of Liquor Control. Peggy, anything? You're gonna have to unmute. There you go.
Hi. Yes, I have a renewal for a first and third class. It's for the rolling rooster at the Skyship Base Lodge.
Okay, and it's a renewal. You got a motion, Rob, to let the town clerk's office to move forward, rolling rooster, first and third?
Motion.
All in favor? Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Approval use, approve use of $3,500 from special projects restricted funds. I'll let you take that, Tom.
Okay. We had to spend $3,500 to get an environmental assessment on the old schoolhouse on River Road that the Sherburne voluntary fire department's gonna donate to the town, but we wanted to make sure there was no environmental issues. And it came back clean, no need to progress. But we didn't have any money budgeted for that. And we have a pretty good balance in the special projects restricted funds, which is kinda reserved for projects for planning commission. But right now, there's about $248,000 in there. And they know that I'm making this request and they would've been with that.
So, this kinda falls in the same.
It does fall in, and we were taking.
We used the money for the down payment on the housing, the down payment on there, but they got reimbursed for the purchases, but the cost of like Nicole's study and stuff on there stayed with them.
But we stated, we named that fund appropriately way back for special projects, and I think taking on River Road, you know, is a special project.
Yeah.
It's our degree.
I get a motion to allow the town manager to move forward with the $3,500 from the special projects. Any discussion? Where we had, nothing else? All in favor? Aye. The next one is up to you two, Tom. Approve $117,195 purchase for the construction of a vault at the new town office.
Yeah. That's actually, well, it would be constructed there, but it's a manufactured vault. You know, we tried to obtain a four R variance. It's a standard six R. Fireproof vault is required by statute, I guess. And in that process, we found out you can buy these things, and they're cheaper than making them out of concrete.
Out of, it's cheaper than the concrete being poured.
Right.
Yeah.
We don't have to rip.
Cut the whole floor.
Well, not just the floor, the roof.
Yep. Oh, the roof.
Second floor. He's gotta get from the roof down. So, I mean, you spoke with John Russell.
Yeah, yeah, he's fine with this, and we continue to work.
Jerry Russell's trying to get him to do it.
With, with the architect and with John Russell and his company. Cause there was, there was a lot of things, a lot of questions that everybody had, but the company's been awesome so far. They know I'm seeking permission from you folks tonight to purchase this thing, but they've still kinda moved ahead.
But it's stamped approved by the state of Vermont.
It will be.
Okay.
I mean, they do these things all the time.
Yeah, good.
Yeah.
The owner of the company is actually the chair of the NFPI, so.
I don't know if that's a conflict of interest or not, but I would, that's great.
It's easy to get approved.
Yeah, no, he's, one of the questions we had for him is, will you provide drawings to this thing so that we can get a permit from the fire marshal before we install it? We wanna make sure that they're okay with it. Because we had quite, kind of a lengthy meeting with them over trying to get the four R variance, which we did not get. And they're the ones that said, you know, you can buy these things. And Jim was searching during the meeting, searching for companies while we're doing that.
We found one.
And Firelock is the company out of Pennsylvania that is, they're really great.
Massachusetts, all around.
Oh, yeah.
So, they walked the panels through the door, they weld them right inside the building. It's 100 days for them to make the prefab setup to the vault size that we give them the dimensions, 100 days for that. The price includes them then shipping it here, bringing their folks in, six days on-site with their hotel stays or whatever, and they put it together.
Welded, huh?
Welded, they welded, and it's like two-foot sections that they come in with through the front door.
That's great.
And then they welded together there, ceiling, sides, whatever, on top of it. Then from there, then Russell Corporation will have to put the last bit of gypsum board on to get that last hour or whatever.
Okay.
And that's how they get to. They're rated five hours plus one hour for the gypsum board.
Okay.
And Division of Fire Safety is good with that, so. So, $117,195 for the vault to get the town manager approval. To use the funds, or, I mean, I don't even know if this needs to be a vote, because it's...
Well, it's a, it's a large purchase.
Okay. The town manager would like us.
Pardon? Yeah. I think it's part of the bucket of money that's already allocated.
Right, but he would like a motion from us to approve him spending $117,195 for the construction of a vault at the new town office.
So moved.
All in favor? Aye. Citizens' appointment to town manager hiring committee?
Yeah, you wanna take this one?
Well, you got the...
Okay. We put an ad out because we decided we wanted to have one citizen on the hiring committee. And we got two folks to apply. And one of them is on Jerry Russell and Jay Hickory also expressed interest in being on the hiring committee. I think Jerry has done this before, I understand, and Jay is a town employee. So, we wanted to have two town employees. That would be a third if you guys were putting him.
So, I think both candidates are great, but with what we set out with, it was gonna be two from the town office, which I think we decided was Lucretia and Emily from the rec department. So, in my mind, we really just have one citizen putting their name in at this time, cause then it would look like we have all employees.
Employees, right? Yep, okay.
But thank you, Jay. I mean, can, I mean, I, make, can you make a motion to approve Jerry Russell as the person to be on the hiring committee for new town manager?
Yeah, motion. Second.
Any questions?
No questions.
Jerry, do you wanna say anything? While you're here, probably while you're on. And you're muted.
No, just thank you for having confidence with me. I'll do my best.
Course you will.
Jerry, does your, does your letter have your email on it?
No.
I'm not certain that it does.
It doesn't, I'm looking at it.
Would you send me an email so I get your email address, and then I'll send you the resumes? The resumes were due today, and there's about 108 pages worth of resumes.
So, back to the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Lucretia, we have Jerry's email at the office, don't we? She's shaking her yes.
I beg your pardon?
Lucretia had, we have your email at Town Hall, so Lucretia can get it from, Tom can get it from Lucretia tomorrow, cause I'm sure from now, we're gonna be sending out all these things by email anyway. So, get like a group email.
Yeah, dude, yeah.
So, just add Jerry's name on. Next up is FY '26 partial budget review. I mean, Tom, you're new to this, but you've been doing all this in the background.
Yeah.
And you did ask me just a little bit like how, and, and Rob, this is your first too, and Chris and I have done them. Is it like our first review, looking at it, and we don't make any promises until we see everything in front of us?
Okay.
Cause there's a whole bunch of different things, so, I mean, we're getting it proposed to us right now, you know, if you wanna look through it and make any comments, or, or Tom, if, you know, give us little highlights of how you got to where or whatever. There's some negatives and some positives on that end?
Yeah. And as you can see, this is just the first few sections of the budget. We're still unfortunately trying to refine some of the larger budgets and make sure we have accurate numbers. And that's mainly due to the fact that, due to our first run through this, the budget is substantially higher than last year. We're now at about 12%. I think some large items last year were under budgeted, and we cannot continue to do that. But we're still refining it, trying to get accurate numbers. And, and I did send out a tentative schedule for future sessions where we'll be dealing with the budget. And I think on the 23rd, we'll have the police department and a couple other departments, and then we'll continue to do that. Oh, I'm sorry, we're gonna actually have a couple sessions on the 17th and 18th, and then the 23rd is our routine meeting.
Yeah, Eli, curse the law.
So anyways...
So, is the process for this, when we go through those longer sessions, you guys may kill me for saying this, but I'd actually like to go through every line and raise out what we do. So, we go through, and I really wanna be able to understand, you know, every aspect of this, not, you know, not just, you know, how we did, but even what it specifically is, so I can have a better perspective in the, in the future. Right? Okay, good.
So, we just got these this morning. This was one of the things, I mean, in an email. I think we just got this stuff in the office.
Yeah, yeah.
So, I mean, in the future, if we can get it the weekend before.
Yeah.
So that we can go through it.
Yeah.
But for today, I mean, you know, we have this in front of us, and I think the next meeting, we should, you know, Rob, you can, and I will too.
Yeah.
And Chris, you know, you go through it and, and line items or whatever. I know, I mean, is it safe to say that Lucretia's retiring yet?
Sure.
Okay, so Lucretia, I was asking if it's safe to say that you're retiring yet? I don't know if that's fully announced or whatever, but, you know, congratulations on retirement. And...
I don't know, they celebrated it.
I know, yeah. It's out there.
When I look at the, right now, we have two, and I think I know the answer, but I just wanna make sure that it's said, because you've been with the town for how long, Lucretia?
With the town, I started in 99, but now I'm in the minutes.
Yeah.
As clerk, I started full-time in 2002.
Right, so when people start looking at this, and they start going through and seeing that there is a clerk, and then there's two assistant town clerks, the dollar amount is coming down on the assistants, I see on the right-hand side, Tom?
Yes.
Okay? And I would think losing, and this is, this is my opinion to you two, cause we're going through this. Nothing against you, Peggy, you're new, it's a year, but I think we probably need another person as who's ever doing this budget to come in to help be a third hands-on deck or whatever at this time.
I don't understand that. I don't understand what you're saying.
I'm showing here on the town clerk that there's a town clerk, an assistant clerk and an assistant clerk.
Right.
And then I'm showing underneath the treasurer that there's a treasurer and an assistant treasurer. So, that to me puts that there's five people there, and right now...
No.
Well, okay, that's why I'm asking for...
So, what it is, is right now, I have, my position is I am doing two positions for treasurer, and my salary is split between those two.
Okay.
And going forward, you will have a clerk, Peggy. You will have a treasurer, Monica.
Okay.
Monica needs to have an assistant treasurer. Assistant treasurer would not be a full-time position for Peggy and Monica, and Monica would remain assistant clerk. The clerk's office has, the work in the clerk's office has increased steadily over these 22 years. And coming down the road, I know exactly what's coming down the road with the, with the TIF and with all of the development. Even during slow periods of real estate, our office has maintained to be very busy. That with elections, there, there is no, there's no way this office can go back to just a clerk and an assistant clerk. And with Monica being the treasurer and assistant clerk, you need enough, and she needs an assistant treasurer. You need to have another person. So, my proposal was that the assistant treasurer would also serve as assistant clerk, and so that's where the other two assistant clerks come in, cause one of them is Monica, and her salary is gonna be split between the treasurer and assistant clerk, the first assistant clerk. The second, the assistant treasurer, who will also serve as assistant clerk, is the other salary, and that is gonna be a 30-hour-a-week position salary, which Monica is right now 30 hours, but she will go to 40 once she takes on the treasurer position. So, that, it still remains right now a three-person office. Not to say that down the road is not gonna require another individual in part-time, but that's down the road, and for now, it's staying a three-person office. So, so to basically get the salary of Monica's salary, you'd have to add salary of the treasurer with the assistant clerk, the first one, and then the other assistant treasurer and the last assistant clerk is.
I understand. Okay. That's why I'm asking the question, because it looks a little different than the previous one, where there was just one, and then...
So, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Lucretia while we have one, two?
No questions for me.
Okay, we're gonna go through a detailed process on this.
Yeah.
Okay.
In the future, we'll have them prior than...
Yeah, we can review any questions, but ultimately, Tom will walk us through the thinking behind each element and why we wind up with an increase or decrease and what happened, right, so you'll have the insight for all that.
Perfect.
Yeah, between me and the department heads, the department heads honestly have a better handle on their budget than I do.
Yep, makes sense, okay.
Yep. But they will be here, like Lucretia's here tonight, because...
This year's set is pretty much at this time, this does only include, this is the upper part of the town office, does not include recreation.
Right.
Police, fire, any of that.
Yeah, as we're saying earlier, we're still trying to refine those numbers, because they're, they're very large.
Yeah.
And I don't wanna present a budget that large to you guys. I told everybody, they chased me out of town if I did, so.
What were you saying, 12%?
Yeah.
Okay.
12% is only the office. You're not even, you haven't touched anything else.
No.
No, no, no.
Total.
Are you thinking total right now?
Finding that 12% down, is that what you said?
That's, yes, yeah. And we do have, there's a couple big items that we put in there, and one is an additional $300,000 for paving. Right now, that paving line item's $100,000, and we increased it by $300,000. You guys may not agree that this is the time to do that, but, so I'll tell you that ahead of time. Another big line item change that we're gonna have is, we're gonna need some more money probably for the new town hall, and that's gonna be in around $300,000, too. We may be able to find some reserved restricted funds for that here and there, and maybe some other enterprise funds that we might be able to pull together, but we might have to ask, put something in the budget for, for, for the new town hall. I'm certain of that. And we're seeing, you know, some big increases that are uncontrollable, like insurance went up by $64,000. Believe it or not, our healthcare costs went down.
Oh.
Yeah. We, we are changing staff a lot in the highway department, and those are folks that, the guys that don't want, need healthcare.
Hmm, okay.
Yeah. So...
That's an abnormal.
Yes, it is. Very, very. I've never seen that happen before.
We have a school district offering people to, to walk out, to not take it, so, so that's good to hear. Basically, I mean, we can go through this also and just, I mean, the one I was pointing at, I really thought there was just three positions, and I'm glad Lucretia was here to point out that, how it runs, so, the different places. So, there's no, we're not making a motion to approve of moving forward the rest, so...
Under study.
Yeah. So, select board member comments or concerns?
I don't have any at this time.
Nothing for me?
Nothing here. What were we supposed to? Give an update on the lights down at the bottom of the road for those...
On the sign?
Chris, was the sign that the line was broken in the excavation or whatever, and I believe they're coming in to redo it, so we get the extension cord out, so it's not run on there, and the ti, and the sensors will be working, so it's not on 24/7 or whatever. So, okay. And we got open public comment. There's nobody in here from the public, you all stay at home. Don't blame us for the storm. Eli, you have anything to say? Patrick, you have anything to say?
I do actually have a question. If, we're checking on the status of town manager, looking at the different schools and school choice options that we voted on last March. I know we had a lot of change happen this year, so I'm wondering if anything's progressed with that.
So, it really wasn't put, we couldn't throw that at the town manager, but I've been talking to a couple different people, and if you wanna follow up, right now, at the school district, they're looking at $2.5 million worth of cuts to take the dollar amount down to $1.87 prior to the CLA. Just to give a run-through, I went to the board meeting last week. The CLA, if we aren't done with our reappraisal, the CLA would be at 45% for the town of Killington, but the state has done a new CLA calculation. They add up all the CLAs in the state, all the towns, and then divide it by X amount of towns, and the average CLA in the state of Vermont is 72% by doing that. So, a 72 becomes 100. So, you take your 45, you divide it by 72, you end up with 63. So, we would be at a 63% CLA at a $1.87. Last year, we were $1.79, I'm sorry, $1.67, I believe, at 53.25. So, our tax rate, if it stays at the 45 and we don't get the reappraisal done, which I believe we are, we will be, a tax rate would be 20 cents lower per hundred on the homestead tax rate. We don't know what's gonna happen to the non-homestead until the state tests that, but I believe that's gonna be lower also by 20 cents. The reappraisal gets done, I could only look at a book that the state gave out last week. 100 CLA would be 139. So, you would take, you would take the $1.87 and divide it by the 139%, so it'd come down to like a $1.24, a $1.25. The state is doing, since we had that vote, Patrick, the state is doing a lot of looking into, of making changes that I believe we want, and one of them is fewer and newer, or fewer schools. So, I do have a meeting with Wild Jepson and Zoe, who is the new AOE director, coming up in the next two weeks. We haven't dropped it as a town, we're, you know, but this is not something that's gonna happen right away. If you listen into the school district, they got a whole bunch of people in there now because they're, one of the things is they're making cuts to the teachers and special programs like music and the arts and Latin and everything, yet administration is still putting in a 5% increase. I could say this, because that was one of the big topics the other day, like the administrators should be leading and freezing their salaries or whatever. And so, there's a lot of conversation going there, but moving into another school district with the state doing what they're doing, Patrick, we're gonna move forward, but it's probably gonna take a year or two to figure out what the state is doing.
Okay, so it hasn't gotten lost, but is...
It's not lost, but it's not fair throwing that on to an interim town manager at this point here, okay? But there's still discussions going on, and let's see what happens at the school, cause I personally feel that's a domino effect over there, that, you know, the reason why I made that motion last year was because the way they wrote up their one policy, that if the budget was X amount of the school, new town, the new school building, that a certain percentage of the bond payment was, they would find cuts every, other, other places in the school budget. And we want the kids to learn, we don't really want them to be in Taj Mahal, so, but what they're doing now is by cutting programs and cutting teachers and not looking at the real problem, I think every year, we'll see a decrease in students, and that will then lower the, the state average and keep on making us make more cuts because of the 118% of the state average, and then they'll have to find more cuts and more cuts and more cuts. So, that's why that motion was made.
All right, thank you very much.
All right. We have another. Eli? Go ahead, Eli.
Remind me what the CLA is, please, I forgot.
Common level of appraisal. So, the state takes the sales of the last two years in the town of Killington, and if your house sells for $200,000, and it's only on the ground list for $100,000, you have a 50% CLA. So, then they take the tax rate and divide it by the 50%. So, if a tax was a dollar, they're saying with your CLA, it's a $1.50. You've been paying tax bills for how long, Eli? That's how it's worked.
Much, much so long.
Yeah.
I just pay them. I don't understand them.
All right. That's, it's called common level of appraisal. If you Google it, CLA in Vermont, it'd be good reading for you. So, next up is town manager's report.
Yeah, I just wanna let the board and the public know that the road crew is up to full capacity. We have every slot filled. We filled the final slot with a seasonal employee, a full-time seasonal employee that had been, had worked before, and we couldn't find anybody else, and he luckily came forward and said, hey, you know what, I'm interested this year. And, and so, he's, didn't need any training, and, oh gosh, Alex?
Somebody at the highway department?
Yeah, that had been here before.
Okay.
Just coming in for the wintertime?
Yeah.
Okay.
You ask who it was?
Yeah, so it just...
I can't, I can't remember the last name.
Rosie ain't giving up his summertime job. He likes his wintertime here.
Yeah, no, no, it wasn't Rosie.
I wasn't sure who it was over there.
And we have our facilities manager, Peter Bizzles, retiring at the end of the year. We hired his replacement, he started today, so there's an overlap. So, there's... We hired his replacement, he started today, so there's an overlap, so that we have some pretty good training. A fellow named Tori Scarringe, he's a local guy, been around Killington for a good while, was interested in having a real job, you know, with benefits and constant paycheck. It seems like he's going to be a really good fit with his skill set and his customer service skills, because he kind of is customer service, taking care of all the buildings and the people.
Where'd he come from?
Well, he'd been doing different things, you know, lately, he'd been working at ski, ski shops, you know, and, and in the summer, he's a hang gliding instructor, you know, as a part-time thing.
All right.
Great, congratulations.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Any other town managers' report?
Well, today was the deadline for town manager application materials, and then we have them in front of us. We received, I don't know, I might as well say what we received, there's about 20 here, varying backgrounds and qualifications, and so the committee will start looking at those, and, and the tentative plan is to start interviewing next week, the 17th and the 18th in the mornings.
Great. We'll go through this.
Yeah.
Once again, we just got that today, so.
That's all I have.
All right. Executive session, I've got one for real estate, for an update on real estate, so. Can I get a motion at 7:07 to go into executive session for real estate?
So moved.
All in favor? Aye. We're not going to have any decision made afterwards for somebody going down to Rutland, Peg TV. We'll be coming out and no action taken. Okay?